The Beulah Trail to join us today. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Wow, that's the only thing I can say. Thank you. You hit certain moments in life where you're at a loss for words. And to see all of you here today coming out to celebrate this monumental moment in our nation's history and in our state's history is just incredibly exciting. On behalf of the Board of the Friends of Hocessen Colored School Number 107, I'm David Wilk. I would like to welcome all of you here with our warmest regards. So, thank you. Also, could I have, if you don't mind, could I have all the board members? Please just stand for a minute so that we can recognize you. We have been so blessed with an incredible board. I feel like the luckiest guy in the world because I have such a great team to work with. And to be able to get together on a day like today, it feels like an amazing blessing for all of us. And it's hard to really capture what happened on this hallowed ground right here and what it means and how it should impact and has impacted every one of us. And the greatest surprise of all is probably more than 50% of Delawareans and maybe people outside the state don't even realize what happened here and what the significance is of this place. So, we are so thrilled to have all of you together to celebrate this. And to start us off, I'd like to invite Pastor Aaron Harris from Chippy Chapel to have a blessing for us to start off our program. Pastor?
Amen. Let us bow our heads in a word of prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, this is the day that you have made. Father, we shall continue to rejoice and be glad in it. Truly, from everlasting to everlasting, thou art God. You are the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, but you're also, amen, the God of Martin, Malcolm, and Megger. And not only that, but you're the God of Sarah Beulah. Father, you're the God of Judge Collins Teetz. Father, you're the God of Louis Redding. But praise be to God, you're also our God. And Father, we take confidence in that the day, knowing that you are the Lord thy God that never changes. And truly, you are not a respecter of persons. There's no secret what God can do, what he's done for others, truly he'll do for you. Father, we thank you for this auspicious occasion where we come to commence a perpetual memory of the great things you've done in this place. But Father, we thank you for not only what you've done here, but what you will continue to do. Father, we thank you for the chasms that we've already crossed. We thank you for the valleys we've climbed out and the mountains we've climbed over. But Father, we thank you for cementing our hands to the gospel plow for there's more work to be done. There's more rivers to cross. There's more terrain to traverse. Father, there's more bridges to climb. But Father, today our confidence is in the words of the Old Hymn that says, "Grace has brought us this far." Through many dangers, toils, and snares, we've already come. Amen. But we're confident that grace has brought us this far and grace will bring us home. Help us to be concrete, steadfast, and immovable, always abounding in your work. This is our prayer, in the mighty and marvelous name of the Messiah, Jesus Christ, and as we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Harris. And just as a historical note, Pastor Harris told us earlier today that this year will be the 125th anniversary of Chippy Chapel, which is our next door neighbor. Many of our friends here today are members of the congregation. Also, many of our former students are there. And in the beginning of our journey, Dick Christopher and I met with a bunch of the former students in the Chippy Chapel with Kirsten Herbert to really start our conversation about what would the vision be for the future of this place. We had to take it and turn it into something magical. And that's been our single goal for the Friends of Hocessen Colored School 107 ever since. So, thank you again, Pastor. Today's theme from the Friends of Hocessen Colored School Board is one of pure and unbridled gratitude to all of you because everyone here has a role, not only in where we've come from, but more importantly, we're all here and to our students in particular, our beautiful students from AI and HB. You're the future and we want you to... And we want you to behold this moment and realize that what happened here is just the beginning of where we can go as human beings in the future. And the reason why we're so excited about the future of this place is because we are not only going to turn this property into a place where the history of the school and its monumental past is going to be highlighted for all to see, but it's also about where do we go from here? It's not enough to just memorialize the history of this place. But what we have to do is we have to show future generations what it's like to embrace diversity, to embrace inclusion, and to be a place where nothing but social equity and equal treatment for all is the mantra and the goal. And what... And that's why our plan is, with all of you as our partners, to turn this into a center for diversity, inclusion, and social equity and have it be a place that's neutral. And let's think about the pillars of that, right? The four pillars. It all starts with the history of the school. And our wonderful, amazing guest speakers are going to talk more about that. It's about the history of the blessed students that went here before us, many of whom are here with us today and will be introduced by Governor Carney. It's also about taking that history and saying, wait a second. But for this place, there may not have been a Brown versus Board of Education. And I know as a lifelong Delawarean and someone who went to Brandywine School District and graduated and has lived in this area, until I was invited to join the Board by Josh Martin and others, I did not know that a place like this existed. And I'm in the real estate industry as well. So, this is a priceless piece of real estate. And we're going to take it to the next level by memorializing the history and then turning it into a place where we are going to teach people how to be more inclusive, how to be more accepting, how to be more equitable to each other, and to have a series of community conversations around subjects that sometimes we're hesitant to talk about around each other. And what a better place to bring people together and say, look at what happened here now. How do we take this and make things better in the future? So, that's number one. Number two is what we call dealing with cultural competency. How do we all figure out how to get along? And how to accept each other with all of our differences? And how to really create a better world together? And then the fourth one is, and this is going to be a lot of fun for all of you because I'm going to tell you a term that hopefully you'll hear today and continue to learn and be scholars on. Social infrastructure. Okay? We all hear about infrastructure. But social infrastructure is the infrastructure that deals with people and issues that are most important to society and humans, human beings. And social infrastructure involves affordable housing, health care, education, public safety, food security, and a number of other entrepreneurship and equity. And so, now that we have a huge, and it's just so incredible because of the serendipity of where we are today, we have here Senator Carper, who is Chair of the Committee that is going to do a lot of the decisions of surrounding infrastructure down in Washington, DC. And we also have Senator Koontz, who is heavily involved with the President and actually knows exactly what social infrastructure is and how it's the key to our future. And also, we have Representative Lisa Blunt Rochester, who was involved in the University of Massachusetts on the Institute for Global Inclusion and other areas. So, we have, we're so blessed to have the Governor here. And Governor Carney has been a huge advocate of human rights as he's led our state in so many different ways. We have our Senators and Congresswomen. We have our members of, esteemed members of the Delaware Legislature who have brought us here today with this amazing resolution for Brown v. Board. And we also have our partners at Newcastle County, County Executive Meyer and Chief Administrative Officer Vanessa Phillips, who are our partners. Officer Vanessa Phillips, who are our partners in this project. And we also have all of the county council members, particularly Janet Kilpatrick. And Janet will bring you up a little later, because I believe Janet said there's a county council resolution to go with the state resolution as well. We have members of the African American Empowerment Fund, who were the original funders of the Hocessen Friends mission and allowed us to save the school from sheriff's sale to get to this moment. And Melody is here. And we also have the state of, all the state of Delaware departments, and we've had universal cooperation from everyone. And we also have Christiana Care and just an amazing group of Delaware State University, UD, my own School Temple University, where I'm a professor there and run the real estate program. And then magically, can you believe, we have former students that went to this school in the 30s to 50s who are also here to be with us. And that, amazing. And we've also developed a wonderful partnership with Red Clay School District and all the wonderful teachers and principals and Superintendent Green, and now Chippy Chapel, who's our neighbors. And I can't even finish the list, but that's just an idea. We all are so grateful to all of you for enabling us to reach this festive occasion and celebration, and we look forward to working together with all of you. So, thank you so much. And I think one, I want to leave you with a quote that really embodies all of the individuals that I just mentioned and those who I didn't, but who we are most thankful for. And this is a quote from Russell Conwell, who is the founder of Temple University and a Baptist minister, a lawyer, a world traveler, and a brilliant orator, according to the book. But Russell Conwell wrote a book that is short and easy to read, and for the students, I think you'll really enjoy it, because it's almost like an adventure story, almost like an Indiana Jones type of story. But it's called Acres of Diamonds. And the essence of Acres of Diamonds are, all of the opportunities you could possibly want can be found where you are now, in your present community, in your present job, with your present family. For best results, all we need to do is dig into our own backyard to find opportunities where we are now to be value creators in our world. And so, here we are, sitting at the school with acres of diamonds all around us, and all of you are the acres of diamonds. All of you are the diamonds that are on these acres. And so, this is really an amazing opportunity. And I'll leave you with one quote from Russell Conwell. "He who can give to his people better streets, better homes, better schools, better churches, more religion, more of happiness, more of God, he that can be a blessing to the community in which he lives tonight will be great anywhere. We live in deeds, not years; in feeling, not in figures on a dial; in thoughts, not breaths, we should count time by heart throbs in the cause of right." So, thank you all very much. And in that vein, we are so honored to have Governor Carney here. And Governor Carney is our 74th Governor for the State of Delaware. The idea for this event came from one of our board members, Dr. Ray Blackwell from Christiana Care, Chief of Cardiac Surgery. And just a quick serendipitous moment, because Dr. Blackwell saved my mother-in-law's life about, oh, probably 10 or more years ago. The only, and talk about serendipity, the only reason I knew that he, we met was at the August 2020 event. He and another one of our board members, Dr. Lynette Edwards? Lynette? Hi. Dr. Lynette Edwards and I met on a field trip for H.B. DuPont to Washington, DC, back when our daughters, my daughter Victoria, who's here, wave your hand to her. And Kalen, which is Lynette's daughter, were classmates at H.B. DuPont. And Lynette and I met on the bus and drove back and forth on the bus to Washington, DC to meet each other, and that's how we all wound up here together. Dr. Edwards and Dr. Blackwell are both members of our board, and Dr. Blackwell's idea was to create a day to celebrate Brown versus Board of Education and Shirley Beulah, Colin Seitz, and Louis Redding. So, I'd like to introduce Dr. Blackwell, because he has a little surprise for Governor Carney. Thank you.
Good morning. Great to see everyone. Thank you for coming out. As you can probably tell, this is a very special place to myself and to a lot of people. I'm fortunate to work with a volunteer board that is just top-notch. I think what they've accomplished over the years is just incredible, saving this place from a sale and providing us the opportunity to make this a landmark for people to move forward and make this a better place. I want to introduce someone I like to call a friend. We share a lot of things in common. Our birthdays are five days apart, but two years apart. We both attended a small school in New Hampshire, and I think he accomplished great things there. We live in a small state, and I believe he's accomplished great things here. And I'd like to introduce someone I like to call my friend, the great Governor of the State of Delaware, Governor Carney.
Thank you, Dr. Blackwell. I am fully vaccinated. I was at an event the other day. Peggy Strine said to me, we're going to have an unveiling today? I said, yeah, we got the whole riverfront thing here. She said, no, I mean the masks. Are we going to take them off? If this was Thursday, we're outside like this, we'd all have our masks off. So, a couple of days left to go. This indeed is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad on it. Dr. Blackwell was kind enough with that introduction. We did go way back. What he didn't say is that he's probably the fastest quarter miler over 50 years of age in the whole United States of America. And that is not a joke. He was quite a track star at Dartmouth College, and he saves people's lives every day, and you and I know some of those folks. I can't divulge. I am just so overwhelmed to be with all of you. Now, Dr. Blackwell, I think this is the first time that we have ever celebrated this moment, a proud moment in what otherwise is not such a proud part of our Delaware history, a moment which most of us don't really know much about. I can guarantee you. I grew up in Claymont. I wasn't there in 1952, but we were there from 56 on. I never knew about Claymont High School's role in admitting the first students of color without incident, after all the other things that we had across our state. And all the people who made that happen, and I'm just delighted to be here with the former students of this colored school. I'm thinking about the DuPont company that made those huge investments. Have we laid arrest former Governor Pete DuPont, the family that he's part of, here with the delegation and with the students and the county executive whose team kind of rescued this, our members of the General Assembly, who stepped up just the other day with our commitment to the future. And with that, I'd like to ask Dante, where is Dante? Dante, come on up here with that sign. Come on, brother. Show him the sign. We can't change the past, but the future is for all of us to change. On behalf of these children and children that will follow them every day. I've got this proclamation, but before I read it, I want to recognize one other person who's here, who he and I have struggled back and forth over what to do for the future for these children. And I can't think of many people under this tent that deserve more recognition for this fight than Jay Street. And Jay, I'd ask you to stand and be recognized. I met with Jay after being elected Governor. I said, here are all the things I wanted to do, and talked mostly about opportunity funding. And he said, this is great stuff. I'm going to sue you anyway. And he did. And the truth of the matter is, we came up with a better approach as we struggled back and forth with the commitment that was needed, the resources that were needed, and the approach. And I just have the utmost respect for Jay. And with that, I'd like to, I want to yield my, whatever other time I have to the other speakers, particularly Colin Seitz, to talk about his father, our Chief Justice. This is a proclamation, Dante, in observance of Brown versus Board of Education Day, whereas Attorney Louis L. Redding filed suit against the State Board of Education in 1951 on behalf of Mrs. Sarah Beulah, her daughter Shirley, after she unsuccessfully attempted to convince local officials to provide adequate transportation for her daughter. And whereas the case formerly known as Beulah versus Gebhardt was combined with a similar suit, Belton versus Gebhardt, the Claymont family, Louise Belton, that had been filed on behalf of eight students in Claymont that were denied from attending Claymont High School. And whereas on April 1st, 1952, the Delaware Court of Chantry Chancellor Collins J. Seitz issued the decision that the disparity between the white and African-American schools was in violation of the United States Constitution. And whereas this ruling was the first instance in which a lower court ruled in favor of the plaintiff, Beulah and Belton, and was the first substantial legal victory for those opposed to segregation in Delaware and in the United States of America. And whereas Beulah and Gebhardt and Belton versus Gebhardt were later appealed to the United States Supreme Court and were combined with four other cases into Brown versus Board of Education, whereas the United States Supreme Court issued its historic decision in Brown versus Board of Education on May 17th, I think that's today, 1954, declaring segregation of public schools to be unlawful in the United States of America. Now, therefore, we, John Carney, Governor, and Bethany Hall, Long Lieutenant Governor, do hereby declare May 17th, 2021, as Brown versus Board of Education Day in the State of Delaware, and urge all Delawareans to recognize this historic and momentous occasion in which our great state played a significant role. Thank you all for making it happen, and thank you for recognizing that the future is in our power to make the change necessary. God bless you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Governor, and we look forward to... Now, you can all see that we have a partially finished building. We can't wait for all of you to come back and join us for our grand, our grand opening and to be, make this a part of your lives and a part of the future and part of all of our hearts and souls going forward. I'd now like to introduce Sonny Knott, our board member. And Sonny has been our inspiration for our board, so much so that we invited him to join our board and be part of everything that we do going forward. Sonny, it's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. My pleasure. To stand before you this morning, it's just an exciting day. Before I go any further, I will ask my fellow students if they would stand, who can, and raise your hand so I can identify you. This is Lawrence Johnson, Leroy Peterson, and James Knott. Those of us who went to that school was the only few of us left now. But we are very excited about what is going to happen. We walked through those doors years ago. My first trip through the door was in 1937. And I stayed there five years, because we're the one-room school, as you all know, with six grades. People get excited when I talk to them. I volunteer at doc after school, and the teachers come and talk to me. What was it like? It's hard to explain what it was like. But we made it. And those of us who are still here, whatever we are doing in our life that is good, was I start here. Was I start here with the six grades and the one teacher and all the shortcomings that we had. We did our work on blackboards, maybe a short piece of chalk, because there wasn't that much to go around. We might have had a half of a pencil, because that wasn't as plentiful. And we read from the book, because the teacher would say, I'm going to call on someone to read. But I didn't volunteer, because I knew I wasn't the sharpest knife in the drawer, so no point me getting up there and making mistakes. But someone would, and you could always tell who the sharp ones was and they studied, because they would be like the puppy in the pet store. Pick me, pick me, pick me. I would say, put your hand down. Maybe she won't pick no, but we can all go out and play. But it was a blessing to go to the school. And so, see, when I stand here and I see everyone who has their heart in what is going to happen, you're not here because you got a paycheck coming. You're not here for whatever. You're here for the dedication of this school, and it means so much to us. So, I'm not going to keep you longer. I'm going to talk to you all day. I'm not a politician, but I can talk. But the most important thing is, we who went to, who walked through that door are looking forward to the day we can once again walk through that door. And at our age, we're not going to run through the door. I'm going to tell you that right now. We're going to walk through the door. We're going to crawl through the door. We might even go through the door on a cart. I'm sorry. But we're going through that door. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Wow. How is that for inspiration beyond? That's where we all are, and to our friends and our brothers and all the children, this is why we're here. We want to keep our promise to Sonny and the other students that whatever we have to do, we're going to get you to walk through that door again. And thanks to all of your help, we're in a position where we can actually see that as a real possibility and will not stop working until we can get to that, through that door. Also, I'd like to recognize Ms. Hilda Beulah Morris. I hope you'll forgive me, Ms. Hilda, but 97 years young and as beautiful as ever. And Ms. Hilda, and the children, all of you, all of the children who walked to the school today, Ms. Hilda walked that every day for six years, rain or shine, to get here. And that's why we are so blessed that all of you recognize the significance of what you did today and the way things were back in the day when that was how people got to school. There wasn't a choice. And that was also the driver behind Fred and Sarah Beulah writing a letter in 1950 to then-Governor Carvell. I think I have a copy of it. This is a copy of the letter from the State Archives to Governor Carvell requesting that Shirley Beulah be allowed to ride the white bus, which went right past the school, number 107, and it ultimately led to the Beulah v. Gebhardt and Belton v. Gebhardt cases. So, Ms. Hilda, it's such a blessing to have you here. And, oh, do you want to come up and say a few words? That would be great. That would be great.
I was born and raised on Limestone Road with Fred Buella and Otte Buella. When he married Sarah Buella, I was in my teens. But Hockeson, we were one big family with no desegregation, no you can't do this and you can't do that. We went anyplace in Hockeson that we wanted to go. And Sarah came on the picture way, 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 way back. She had nothing to do with the community. She married my grandfather in 50 or 60 or something like that. But the Buella family, anybody, even from the little kids up, knew daddy. Because we were one happy family. The Italians and all. Until, of course, after the war, everything grew and Hockeson grew. And we had a lot of ones that moved here from other places that knew nothing about Hockeson. Because the reporters in on WCAU, NBC, they couldn't even pronounce Hockeson. They called it Hakasson. And I said, "No, it's not Hakasson. It's Hockeson." So finally, I guess, as it grew a little bit more in population and all, they finally called it Hockeson. Because I remember your father was on WCAU and WWDEL with your uncle, U.P. Washington. I remember way back then. Of course, I guess I'm past anybody's age in here. But I thank the Lord to be alive. And we had a lovely community. And my grandfather was the backbone of Hockeson.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hilda. Now, I would like to introduce our Chief Justice, Collins J. Seitz Jr. And a little more serendipity, his dad was the chancellor in the Buella versus Gebhart and Belton versus Gebhart cases. And here we are, celebrating his legacy together today, too. Welcome.
Thank you very much, David. I'd like to start by acknowledging my wife, Gail, who's here, and my daughter, Meredith. We were all Hockeson residents for many years, and Meredith is a Hockeson resident today. I think I pronounced that right, didn't I? Okay, I'm one of those newcomers. Thank you for inviting me to speak today. Before there was Brown versus Board of Education and before there were the Gebhart cases, there was Brooks Parker versus the University of Delaware. And you students might not know this, but in 1950, we all talk about these 1952 decisions, which led up to the 1954 decision in Brown versus Board of Education. But in 1950, Brooks Parker and six other students who wanted to attend the University of Delaware filed a lawsuit in the Court of Chancery that sought to force their admission into the University of Delaware so that they did not have to attend Delaware State College. The reason they didn't want to attend Delaware State College was because in 1950, it had just lost its accreditation and didn't offer the same educational opportunities as the University of Delaware did in 1950. And in that case, Parker versus University of Delaware, my father found that the educational opportunities at the University of Delaware compared to Delaware State College were superior at the University of Delaware and ordered the University of Delaware to consider the admission applications of these students without regard to race. So that was 1950. That paved the way. If you were looking at the news media and you followed my father around between 1950 and 1952 and you read his speeches during that time and his radio broadcasts, you would see a man that was passionate to change the course of history in race relations in Delaware. So, students, let's talk a little bit about the 1952 decisions and in particular, the Hockeson decision. You have a sign there. It says "Equality." Where does that word come from? Why do we rely on it so much as judges and lawyers? Well, it comes from the United States Constitution. And I hope, as part of your classes at HB, that you are, have the opportunity to be given a copy of the Constitution and you actually read it because it's an amazing document. And it's not something all of us do, but I recommend highly that it's something that we do often. I know I do. That word "equality" comes from the Equal Protection Clause in the United States Constitution. And hopefully, you're learning a little bit about that. But basically, the Equal Protection Clause guarantees the equal treatment of all citizens in the United States. Everyone should be treated equally. While those words are grand words, but our actions as a government didn't live up to the promise of those words. The law of the land until Brown versus Board of Education was decided by a case of Plessy versus Ferguson. That's a name that you need to remember in the context of Brown versus Board of Education. In Plessy versus Ferguson, the United States Supreme Court held that equality could be guaranteed African-American students as long as the separate schools that they attended were equal to the schools that the white students attended. Think about that for a minute. Black students could attend their own schools. They couldn't attend the white schools. And that was constitutional unless the schools were not equal. Well, we know what happened in the period between 1950 and 1954, before the Brown decision. The schools were dramatically inferior. It was as plain as the nose on your face that that was the case. So what did the court systems do before Brown versus Board of Education? The court said, "Yeah, yeah, we know that the schools are unequal, but let's give the state time to bring the black schools up to the level of the white schools. Take your time, be patient, and this will all get fixed in the course of time." Well, that wasn't good enough for my father or the Court of Chancery or the United States Supreme Court. The unique role that Delaware played in the Brown versus Board of Education cases, this. In my father's decision, he was a state court judge. State court judges aren't allowed to tell the federal judges what to do. It's called the Supremacy Clause in the United States Constitution, which says the federal laws are supreme to the state laws. So my father was not able to say to the United States Supreme Court, "I overrule your decision in Plessy versus Ferguson." But he was able to make an observation, which was cited extensively in Brown versus Board of Education. And that is this observation: That segregation itself, regardless of whether black students are provided equal opportunities in their schools as opposed to white schools, segregation itself results in unequal treatment under the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution. That was the basis for the Brown versus Board of Education case by the United States Supreme Court. There was no comparison of the different schools, the white and the black schools, the educational opportunities in one school versus the other. The United States Supreme Court accepted the reasoning of my father and his decisions in Belton versus Gebhart and Buella versus Gebhart, that segregation per se results in unequal treatment to black students. What was the other remarkable thing about Delaware's role in Brown versus Board of Education? It was this. Delaware was the only case of the five cases to be affirmed by the United States Supreme Court. What does that mean in plain language when we say the case was affirmed? Students, what it means is that the Delaware case got it right and the other four cases got it wrong. Finally, I'd like to close with one other important thing that my father did in these decisions, which the United States Supreme Court did not do in Brown versus Board of Education. My father ordered the immediate admission of African-American students to the white schools in Delaware in 1950, in the University of Delaware case, and in 1952, in the Buella and Belton cases. He said, "You should not have to wait to have your constitutional rights addressed. If they're being infringed, the remedy should be now, not sometime in the future." Unfortunately, the United States Supreme Court took the approach of what has now been termed "all deliberate speed," which essentially allowed a transitory period for schools to desegregate instead of ordering the immediate admission of African-American schools. And we all know how well that turned out. So I am just unbelievably proud of my father and my family to have the foresight in 1950. 1950, think about how popular my father was after those decisions. You can imagine. A lot of things that he was doing were severely impacted because of his courageous decisions in these cases. But he knew what was right. He did it, and Delaware got it right. So I'm so proud of my work at this school. And I'm also so proud of David Wilk, who's been such an inspiration to get all this done. So, thank you very much. And with that, I will introduce someone who needs no introduction, Senator Tom Carper.
Give the Chief Justice another round of applause, please. David, come here. David, how much you get paid for this? How much did you get paid last year, the year before, the year before, next year? Zero. He does this out of love and duty. Give this man a great round of applause. Thank you, David. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Look, if somebody goes to HB, anybody here from HB? Any young women from HB? Any young women in a blue shirt carrying a sign that says "Equality" from HB? Oh, here's one. Come here. Come on, come on over here. Come on, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, all right. Where do you go to school? And what grade are you in?
7th.
And what's your name?
Bernaya.
What does your sign say?
Equality.
Give her a round of applause. All right. The Chief Justice is talking about the Constitution and what the Constitution says about equality. You go back even before that. We come to the Declaration of Independence, 1776, July 4th. We hold these things to be true, to be self-evident, and talks about life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And this is 1776, and that's what our nation was founded on: life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And it was a time when enormous numbers, millions of people in this country, were slaves. They were not equal. They were not treated equal. They couldn't vote. In many cases, couldn't own property. And yet, but the Constitution, the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence said, "No, no, these people are equal." They didn't count as a real person, couldn't vote, couldn't even count when they were counting people eligible, they didn't count them. And, but anyway, we got through all that. And we got to a civil war in 1861. And a war between the states. Lincoln was our president. And Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. The North won the war. The slaves were free. Sort of. Sort of. Because as soon as they were freed, I grew up in Danville, Virginia, last capital of Confederacy, right on North Carolina border. Soon as the slaves were free, you know who emerged? Well, Jim Crow, Jim Crow laws, the Klan. They killed people. Black people who just had the tempest of you to say, "Well, I'm free now. I'm gonna run for office." A number of them were elected. But they were scared to death, intimidated, run out of town. In many cases, hung. And so, despite the promise and the words in the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, it really didn't work out that way, did it? For a whole lot of people. And later on, we would find ourselves in a world war, First World War, Second World War. And a guy named Harry Truman became our president, and he integrated the military. He integrated the military. He was president about the time that this case was being heard in the Supreme Court, the local courts here in Delaware, and later on, the Supreme Court. This decision was rendered in 1952, I think affirmed in '54. And was everything okay after that? Well, not exactly. We have a lot of kids who, they walked into first grade or second or third grade, and other kids in their classroom could read. They could write. They knew math. And a lot of kids who are sitting next to them in their school could do none of that. They weren't prepared for success. They hadn't had the chance that everybody else, a lot of other kids, especially white kids, had. Today, something is, and we've worked, we've had a black president, Barack Obama, our friend, Chris and I, and Lisa, our friend. And you know what? At the same time, after going through all of this, all of this, as Chris, Senator Stevens, and our Congresswoman Noe and our Governor Noe, there are people in, I think, over 30 states, they're trying to enact laws to suppress voters. The kind of stuff that I saw as a kid growing up in Danville, Virginia, last capital of Confederacy, where you had to own land in order to be able to vote. You had to pass some kind of litmus literacy test in order to be able to vote. And if you happened to be black, good luck. If you didn't own any property, good luck. And we're seeing this played out again in real time, right before us. And we can't let it happen. We could not let it happen. I love music, because Chris and Lisa Noe, Governor Noe, love music. Over the weekend, I said to Alexa, "Play Elton John." Alexa said, "Okay." And she played a great Elton John song, "My Original Sin." "You were my original sin." The original sin in this country, I believe, you may too, slavery. Slavery. And we are still battling through that original sin. Original sin. The key is just not to give up. Never give up. Never give up. I'll close with the words of Harry Truman. Harry Truman used to say, "The only thing new in the world in history we forgot are never learned." Think about that. "The only thing new in the world in history we forgot are never learned." A lot of history, right here today, we're here, we're living it. We're like standing on the shoulders of giants that came before us. But just as your generation, my generation, had a chance to make a difference, you guys, all of you, tigers, warriors. We need for you to be tigers and warriors. And encourage your parents to follow your lead. God bless you all. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. And I've gotta go to work. Before I do, I just want to recognize and introduce a great friend, a friend of mine, and of our Congresswoman, our Governor, and just a terrific leader, terrific leader in the United States. And his name is Chris Coons. Chris, please.
What happens to a dream deferred? Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun? Or does it fester like a sore and run? That question was asked by Langston Hughes in the middle of the Harlem Renaissance in the 19... in the 1920s. It would be more than 30 years before a fateful day that we are celebrating now, that was 67 years ago today, when a unanimous decision of the United States Supreme Court was read from the bench by Chief Justice Earl Warren. And that day only came 67 years ago because of some urgent, insistent, important work done right here. So to David Wilks and the board, to our Governor and Congresswomen, Senior Senator, County Executive, everybody who's gathered and helped make this happen, thank you. And to Sonny and your classmates, thank you. Thank you, and God bless you for being present with us and helping bring us into a moment together where we look at our history and the dreams deferred for decades and decades. The dreams of a mom who just wanted the bus that was driving right past her house on Limestone Road, not to take her daughter to Hocessen School 29 up the hill, but to just make it easier for her to get to this school, so-called Hocessen Colored School Number 107. She just wanted a little bit easier day, a little bit easier life for her daughter. And you know, at the end of the day, that's what's driven every great change in our history, is opening your heart, opening your eyes, and saying, "Why does it have to be this way?" Old people said to her, "Don't make a fuss. Don't rock the boat. You don't need to make trouble." And she paid in no small ways. In fact, the Wilmington Morning News reported that Sarah Buell's thriving egg-selling business at her Hocessen farm steadily shrank. As neighbors said, "We don't need to do business with that troublemaker." And I'll remind you that what then-Chancellor Colin Sights did was to simply open his heart and then open his eyes, because the facts were as plain as anyone could see. So just imagine, if we can, students, on a day just like today, when a three-car caravan arrived here from Wilmington, Delaware, and Chancellor Colin Sights got out, Attorney Louis Redding, the first African-American attorney in Delaware history, got out, an opposing counsel, who shall remain nameless, got out, and they were here to examine the facts. Plessy v. Ferguson, separate but equal, standard of the nation for decades and decades, and all you had to do was get out of the car and take a look. The Morning News reported that at the white school just up the hill, Chancellor Sights noted the landscaping, the basketball court, the nurse's office, and auditorium where dancing class was going on when he arrived. And right here, just down the hill, Shirley Buell's school. There was no dancing class. There was no auditorium. There was no nurse's office. There wasn't even indoor plumbing. As plain as the nose on your face, all it took was just a little bit of courage, an open heart, and open eyes, and a young chancellor put his career on the line and penned a simple common sense opinion that said, "Separate but equal does not exist in my state. The schools being provided to young people mean a dream deferred for every young black student in our state, and it must end." And then he went a step further and said, "Separating the races in our country by law, forcing people to go to different schools, live in different neighborhoods, go to different movie theaters, drink from different fountains, is simply reinforcing this founding sin of white supremacy, the lie that was at the very heart of so much of how this country was founded and built, and was in so much tension with those brave, inspiring words in our Constitution that Senator Carper wrote." What's it take to make change, students? A little bit of courage, an open heart, and a willingness to call the question and say, "We've all been in on this lie for far too long." And to have a mom write a letter to a governor, to a chancellor, and demand justice. Ours is a mighty God, Pastor. And as folk have gathered at Chippy Chapel for decades and decades, 125 years, they've reflected on how ours is a God of righteousness and of justice. What happens to a dream deferred? Does it dry up like a raisin in the sun? Does it fester like a sore and run? We are 67 years past the day declared now as Brown versus Board Anniversary Day by our Governor, when the Supreme Court said, "In our legal system, we will end apartheid in America." But it took decades for that to really be made real, and it took the hard work of a number of warriors in front of me here today. And that job is not done. That job is not done. I moved here to Hocessen when I was six. I started elementary school at Yorklin, just down Yorklin Road. My best friend went to Hocessen. I was texting him as I was in a car driving over, not driving. I went right by his house in Gateway Farms. My house was right here on Erickson Avenue, right, I mean, a quarter mile away. And my mom was a public school teacher. And you know what? And I went to HB for middle school, until I went to law school and took a course from Burke Marshall. When George Wallace, when Governor George Wallace stood in the schoolhouse door and prevented integration in Tuscaloosa, Burke Marshall was the man sent down there by President Kennedy. It wasn't until I'm sitting in a classroom taught by that man, where Jack Greenberg was a guest teacher, and he told me my own state's history. How embarrassing. How embarrassing to think that folks from this community, at least from my family, did not know this history. So how do we make a difference with that? Well, first, today, this declaration. Second, this commemoration and this gathering. But third, I've joined with Congressman Clyburn in a bill in the United States Congress, and Congresswoman Blunt Rochester is helping lead this in the House, where we will add this site to the Brown versus Board of Education sites, expanding the national recognition of the history of this site. No student at HB, no student at Hocessen, or North Star, or Yorklin, no student in this state or country should fail to learn, because that history, if not learned, will be repeated. That history, if not examined, will continue to lead to dreams deferred. And if dreams are deferred, dreams are denied. And if dreams are denied, democracy is at risk. So to everybody who is part of this effort, thank you. To everybody who continues to insist on righteousness and on our keeping the promises written in the Constitution, thank you. And to those who continue to goad us, whom you elect, to do better, Bibi, thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you so much, Senator. And that was one of the great surprises of the past year, was being part of the legislation to have this site become part of the National Park Service. And so, anybody interested in more details, we have information on our website, hocessencoloredschool107.org. And we also have a living history and all kinds of podcasts and information for all of you, for all of you high-tech students. We're getting ready to start our social media prowess, which is anything but my specialty. But also, we're also going to do some case competitions and some other things like that as well. So stay tuned. And thank you, Senator, so much. Now I'd like to welcome U.S. Representative Lisa Blunt Rochester.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is the day that the Lord hath made, so let us rejoice and be glad in it. I am humbled to be standing here. Mr. Sonny, Ms. Hilda, to all the dignitaries, to my heroes and heroes who sit in this audience, and you know who you are. I stand on the shoulders of giants. I am here, and I love that the students are here. I'm so glad you're here, because this moment is your history. You are living through history. You lived through George Floyd. You lived through a pandemic. You were in homeschool and all over, trying to get through the internet. You did that. You pushed climate change. I stand here today humbly, thinking about your father, thinking about Louis Redding, thinking about my father. It's funny, about a week ago, my dad actually gave me my first report card. My first, I did pretty well. My first report card was in Philadelphia, 1969, not that far after Brown versus Board of Education, not that long after. And I thought about what David said about social infrastructure, that education is the key. We all know. But if you don't have a home to go to, that's hard. I had public housing. If you don't have food to eat, we had food stamps for a moment. If you don't have clean air, clean water, it is hard for students to learn. And so I applaud you. I applaud you for not just looking at the past, but thinking about the present and the future, because that's what this moment is about. This is the day that the Lord hath made. But I also think about the fact that across this country, there are places and people that are trying to diminish, shorten, shrink, black history, right now, in our country. And so the effort that you are making here is bigger than just this one school. It is for all of us. I am so proud. But I will also say, I do like Scripture, but there's another one that said, "Faith without works is..." Faith without works is... Faith without works is dead. So each and every one of us has to take up the mantle. I thank you so much, Ms. Hilda. I thank you to the classmates that attended this school. I thank you. But I also know that I heard, I went on a civil rights pilgrimage with John Lewis, who talked about getting into good trouble. And on that pilgrimage, I was talking to one of the women who was in the church that was bombed. And you know what she said? She said, "I'm tired of y'all standing on my shoulders. Get off our shoulders." So it's time for us to get off the shoulders and get some work done. And so to the students, because a couple of them wanted to be teachers. I had some teachers, I had a doctor. Who was the doctor? I had a doctor, I had three guys that wanted to take my job. This is a beautiful day, and as we celebrate this school and the legacy and the history that Delaware has put forth, it also reminds us that we've got work to do. Work to do. We are on the battlefield to get some work done. So I am so pleased and proud to be here. I'm not going to talk any longer, because I want the students to not be out in the But I just want to say how proud I am to be a part of this. To all of you who have made this day a reality, but who are looking forward to the future, I say thank you, I salute you, and I'm ready to work with you. Let's get some work done.
Lisa's report card reminded me of one of my least favorite moments in life, showing my dad my report card. So what do you think, Dr. Wilk? Well, I don't really have words for that, so, anyway. I hope you students don't experience that too. I'm sure you don't, always. Anyway, thank you, Lisa, so much, and thank you to our amazing congressional delegation. It's one of the greatest things about Delaware and Governor and CJ, Chief Justice. We are so blessed to have such amazing leaders in our state and in our community. And we, and the access, thank you all so much. And having the access and being able to really move the ball together is what makes it even more magical. And so we thank you all for never missing a beat and always supporting what we're doing. So thank you again. And now, I'd like to introduce some of the members of our General Assembly. And you guys have become our latest rock stars, because we are working in every way possible to set a standard for the future of inclusion and diversity and social equity by using this place as the vehicle for implementing all of the things that you've heard from all of the speakers today. This is how we go about. We go to a place that's neutral and that doesn't have any political affiliation and only has one purpose and one goal, and that is to transform, okay? Transform where we are to where we want to go. So that's our mission. And as you know, we're all getting paid lots of money, and my board members included, we're all getting paid tons of money to do this. But no, actually, I just want to thank my board again, because we have such an amazing group, and but for them, we would never have been able to make it to this point as well. And then the other amazing thing that's happened to our mission is Newcastle County and the leadership of County Executive Matt Meyer and County Administrative Officer Vanessa Phillips and Director of Public Works Tracy Searls and Marcus Henry from Community Development and our wonderful, amazing Councilwoman Janice Kilpatrick from Hocessen and all of the council members who have supported everything we're doing here in the county. So I'd like to welcome Matt Meyer to join us as well.
Thank you so much, David. My name is Matt Meyer, County Executive. It's good to see everyone today, especially the students. Before I ran for office, a little over four years ago, I was a teacher. And one thing you learn as a middle school teacher is when you're teaching right before lunch, you got to be quick. You got to be quick. One thing I've learned as County Executive is after you speak, when you speak after the Governor, the Senior Senator, the Junior Senator, the Congresswoman, the Chief Justice, and the great Sonny Knott, you got to be quick. Let's give them all a big round of applause. So I'll be, I'll be quick, but I would be remiss if I didn't start by calling up one person, when David Wilk, Fred Sears, Bill Allen, who I hope is here somewhere, Josh Martin, and so many other leaders from the community came to our office, back when you could come to an office, about two years ago, to ask that we take on this project and understand, as the council members here know, a day doesn't pass without someone asking the county to take on land as a county park. And I was unsure what to do. It sounded like a tremendously compelling project, something extremely important to our community. Vanessa Phillips, who was the first African-American ever to serve in the most senior-appointed role in county government. Normally, walking out of a meeting, we walk out, she's got to take care of the budget, so she's usually telling me all the reasons why we can't do this or can't do that. She said, "Matt, we're doing this." So come on up, Vanessa.
Thank you, Matt. It's truly an honor to be here today to witness such a great event, when all of our partners are here together to honor our history. I would like to thank, on behalf of Newcastle County, the Friends of Hocessen Colored School Number 107 and its board, for creating the opportunity for the county to designate this site as our 250th park. I would also like to thank our community partners, the Red Clay School District Superintendent Darrell Green and Dr. Tawanda Bond, Christiana Care, as well as the University of Delaware, and our county council members for your support. At this time, I would ask for our county council members to come up to read their resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. I know that we have councilpersons Dave Carter and Jay Street here, if you would like to come up and join me. David, on behalf of Newcastle County Council, I want to present you- David, on behalf of Newcastle County Council, I want to present you a ceremonial resolution. The actual official resolution has not been passed by council yet, but will be on the following Tuesday. I'm not going to read it, because it just reiterates the history that we have heard from every other great person who has spoken today. I just want to say that this resolution acknowledges the history. It's the history that we learn from, and we are here today to celebrate the positive movement made possible by this history.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay. Thank you so much, Janet, and deepest thanks to our partners at Newcastle County and Council as well. And now I would like to introduce members of our General Assembly. Krista Griffith, I think, will come up first, and Krista, and Nandi Chukwaka, and Kendra Johnson, and we can't, and also Laura Sturgeon and Darius Brown, and also Stephanie Bolden.
And Representative Cook, sorry.
I'm sorry. Representative Cooks, I'm sorry.
Again, thanks to my colleagues who are here. Welcome to the 12th District. This is the district that Senator Sturgeon and I are proud to represent, and how fabulous to have so many important, wonderful people here today. We too passed a resolution in the General Assembly last week on behalf of the House and Senate, recognizing today is the 67th anniversary of Brown v. Board of Education Day. I don't want to reiterate everything that was said, because there's so many wonderful things that have been said and powerful, but what I do want to say is this: I want us to come back in five years, and in 10 years, and in 15 years, because I want to see what we're going to celebrate then. Today, we're celebrating 67 years of history, when, when inequality was considered equality, when we said as Del, when we said as a country, "That is not right." I want us to come back in five years, and 10 years, and 15 years, and see from these students what we're going to celebrate then, because as much has been said, we have lots of work to do. So let's come back. Let's come back every five years and celebrate those other accomplishments that we have yet to do. So thank you very much, and I believe Representative Chukwacha was going to say a few words, too.
Thank you. I was just reflecting on, on what it means to be here today, and jotted down a few notes, and just wanted to share them. A nation of forgetting, in the era in which we live, where if it isn't at the top of your timeline, it didn't happen, but we are here. This is the fight. See, the fight for educational equity didn't end with Brown versus Board decision in 1954. Today, the struggle continues, and we must resist the indifference and stand up with courage, the same courage and conviction, just like the Beulah family, just like Mr. Redding, just like Judge Seitz. But sadly, in our own state, our current laws and policies within our state have reversed many of the gains that have been achieved in this landmark case. Today, in my own city, our schools are more segregated now than ever before. We must honor, we must honor those who came before us by working to ensure that their efforts were not in vain. We must preserve the enduring spirit of all of those, the Beulah family, Mr. Redding, Judge Seitz, all of the known and unknown students who attended this color school and other color schools throughout our state. Not only the color schools of yesterday, but the new color schools, the racially identifiable high-knee, high-poverty quote-unquote color schools of today. Our work is not done. Thank you.
I just want to welcome everybody to the 4th Senate District and say how proud I am to be part of this day, to represent this school. And something that I'm going to echo, one thing that I heard, I mentioned it on the floor when we were doing the resolution, a wonderful resolution sponsored by Representative Griffith, but in the Senate, we talked about it. I too grew up here in Delaware, went to the Brandywine School District, never knew, never knew this school existed, never knew our part in Brown v. Board of Education, and that's shameful. And that's why I fully support making African-American history part of the curriculum in Delaware. And that is a bill that we have before us that we will be voting on. And I fully support making learning to be anti-racist part of the curriculum in Delaware, because racism did not end when the Board v., the, sorry, Brown v. Board of Education was passed, and racism did not end when we finally elected a Black president. Racism is still alive and well. We are getting better. We are evolving, but we still have a ways to go. And so I echo the words that were said earlier by my dear friend, Nandi Chukwacha. We still have a ways to go for equity in education, and as a Senate Education Chair, I am there with you in that fight, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Good afternoon. It's, it's always good to hear from my colleagues on days like today, so I don't have to speak. And so, on behalf of Delaware State Senate, I'll join with my colleague, Senator Sturgeon, and the members of the Delaware Legislative Black Caucus, whose shoulders we not only stand on, but walk alongside with our founding member, Representative Stephanie T. Bolden. Not only did she introduce us to how to get things done in Dover, but she ensured that we had the passion and the know-how to execute after legislation was passed, that it would be implemented and executed to improve the human condition. And so we're here today, because no matter what hue you may be here in the state of Delaware, all of us are God's children, and we need to walk together, children. Don't you be lonely. Don't you be weary. There's a great camp meeting in the promised land. We're going to get there. We're going to fulfill that promise.
Thank you so much to our esteemed members of the legislature. And especially, we're here today because of the resolution and proclamation that you created. And special thanks to our local Representative Krista Griffith and Senator Laura Sturgeon as well. Thank you. Oh, also, we'd like to take a moment to, we have some happy birthdays. We'd like to wish Governor Carney a happy birthday for May 20th. And also, our board member, Dr. Ray Blackwell, just celebrated his birthday on the 15th of May. And any students or others that have their birthdays in May, raise your hand. Anybody else? Happy birthday! All right. Many happy returns. And last but not least, you students did a phenomenal job here. We're really proud of you. And this was a long time to sit in the sun. Most importantly, we hope you came out of this with something in your hearts and souls that you can carry forward and help to show us old folks the way, okay? Because we're counting on you to make the future better, because we're really at a great inflection point in our nation's history. And I think what's really unique about what we've kind of learned today is our vision from the board standpoint is this place can be a national example of how to create and transform human behavior into equity and inclusion and for everyone to feel valued and appreciated. And so we hope and pray that you'll join us in that mission as well. And then finally, a special thanks to the law enforcement team from Newcastle County. Thank you for safely escorting our children and teachers and administrators and walkers. And also, we'd like to thank the faculty and administration of Red Clay and Dr. Bond and Holly Goldar for working with us to create the special feeling that the children brought to our, our day. And so with that, I would like to send our greatest blessings to everyone. Thank you all so much for attending and joining us today. And the most importantly, we are starting today for the rest of our mission, and we want to invite every single person here to be a partner in what we do. And you're welcome to join our team and help us to create the future in not just a little way. I think we have high aspirations, and I think that with the team that you've seen today and the support that we have, there's no limit to what we can accomplish together. And we have one student from HB DuPont that would like to just share one last reflection Let's welcome Sophie.
I speak on the behalf of the HB students. When I say that we are truly honored to be here, celebrating this historical moment with all of you, on the 67th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education decision. As stated by Ceece Kasim, "Strong people stand up for themselves, but stronger people stand up for others." Today and every day, we must recognize the efforts and sacrifices strong people have made to make the world a better place. Let us remember when Shirley Beulah endured her two-mile journey to school each day so she can get an education. Let us remember when Chancellor Colin Seitz stood up for equality, and let us remember when Louis Redding fought for civil rights for all people. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sophie, and for all of the schools and for everybody here. God bless and take great care. Thank you. Thank you so much.